...meeting first, but first we're gonna host the organizational meeting. We're gonna select our chairman and vice chair for the year, and then we'll begin the public hearing session. So at 7:01, we're gonna be opening up the zoning board of appeals organizational meeting for 2019. Let's see here, first order of business, we will be electing a chairman. Do we have any motions? Chairman Hoyt?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to put the name nomination of Paul Taveras as chair.
Any discussion or a second?
I'd like to second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Chair.
Thank you.
Would you please step up and finish-
Absolutely.
-running this organizational meeting? We'll be selecting the vice chair for 2019 next.
I will do my best to be worthy of this selection, and as my first order, I would like to nominate Ms. Annette Streets as vice chair. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Ron Hoyt. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimously approved. Congratulations. Do you have a motion to close the organizational meeting?
Motion to close.
Motion to close by Mr. Hoyt, second. Second by Mr. DiSulio, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. With that, we will start the proceedings. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and Happy New Year. At this time, I'd like to ask all council members to please turn off or set to vibrate your electronic devices. Today's date is January 8th, 2019, and the public hearing of the Stratford Zoning Appeals will come to order to hear those petitions advertised for this session. For those of you not familiar with our process, each petitioner or their designated representative will present their case to the board. When they have concluded, board members will then have an opportunity to ask any questions they may have. I will then ask if there is anyone who wishes to speak in favor or in opposition to the petition. We ask all petitioners to please speak clearly and directly into the mic. After all petitions have been heard, we will then recess to our administrative session. Interested parties are welcome to stay; however, only board members and staff will be allowed to speak at this time. And please be advised that clapping or shouting as a way of expressing opinions on applications is not allowed nor tolerated. Thank you. With that, with our first petition on the agenda, Ms. Young, would you please read petition number one, please?
Thank you. Petition number one, 2381 Barnum Avenue, petition of Jose Adolfo Carcamo, forgive me for mispronunciations, seeking a site plan review and waiver of section 7.3 and section 12.5.7.1 regarding the required nine off-street parking spaces for the proposed takeout restaurant in a CA zone hardship, building constructed in the early 1900s without any off-street parking.
Good evening, sir. Please state your name, your address, and your affiliation with this application, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is Jonathan Klein. I'm an attorney with an office at 60 Lion Terrace, Bridgeport, Connecticut, 06604, and I represent the petitioner. I have the evidence of mailing-
Thank you. Can pass that along?
As that's working its way up to the chair, I just note I have the green certified mail return receipts from eight out of the 11 people to whom notices were mailed. The other green cards had not come back, but I have printed out from the United States Postal Service website evidence that, in fact, those letters were delivered. Shall I begin? Oh, sure.
Yes, please.
The variance that the petitioner is seeking here for the proposed takeout restaurant that he plans to operate at 2381 Barnum Avenue is a variance of the off-street parking requirement of section 12.5.7.1, which, based on the 836 square feet of floor space, would normally require nine off-street parking spaces. This matter was before this board in October and was denied by a vote of four to one. One of the main issues at that time regarding that plays into the issue of hardship was the question of whether Mr. Carcamo had inquired of other property owners within 200 feet of his property as to whether they had any off-street parking spaces which might be available to him to use. And we've rectified that in at the December 4th meeting of this board. The board agreed to hear a new petition which we had filed, and I appreciate that very much, and that's what brings us here tonight. In the petition that was filed, or attached to the petition that was filed, you will see letters signed by four property owners within 200 feet of the 2381 Barnum Avenue, which do have paved parking areas off-street, which theoretically could have been made available by them if they were willing to do that, to the petitioner. As you will see from all of them, they have all stated that they have space, but they're not willing to lease any space to Mr. Carcamo. So turning to what exactly the hardship is in this situation, the subject property of 2381 Barnum Avenue was built in 1900 without any off-street parking. It's situated at the corner of West Avenue, and there is adequate off-street parking for the in-and-out nature of the proposed takeout restaurant. There are photographs that are attached to the petition, which were taken by the real estate agent for the owner, the current owner of this property, Mr. Pizone, showing, and these are pictures, so they were taken in September at 12:23 PM, thereabouts, which show that views along the entire block of Barnum Avenue by the property and the side street West Avenue, they're wide open for parking. I don't think it would be an exaggeration to say that even at that lunch hour, you could park tour buses there without any problem off-street. There's plenty of space available. But there's nothing available at all, and nothing can be, no parking spaces can be created on this property, which was where the building was built in 1900. So the peculiar characteristics of this property, specifically the lot area, the lot depth, the lot width, and the size, nature, and location on the parcel of the building make the creation of off-street parking impossible, which makes it obviously exceptionally difficult to develop the property for any kind of use, specifically for the use that we'd like to do here. The hardships specifically affects this parcel, but not the district generally, as shown by the fact that you do have four other properties within 200 feet of this one, which are not so situated. They do have off-street parking, but this one does not. So the hardship of having no off-street parking arises from the application of the regulation, the section of the zoning regulations, as it applies uniquely to this particular property. The history of this property goes way back, all kinds of retail uses, including a poultry shop, a shoe shop, a barber shop, a thrift shop, even a restaurant, and that's not even all of them. And all of those businesses, as with any kind of retail business, by its nature has a lot of in-and-out traffic of customers. And in this particular case, obviously, that's the nature of a takeout business. But people place their orders in advance and come in and pick them up, or they'll come in and place an order and go. No particular customer's gonna be there any more than a couple of minutes as a result of that, and there are no delivery vehicles that, no commercial vehicles, in other words, that Mr. Carcamo will have. He will have four or five employees. They will, any deliveries that need to be made, they'll use their own cars to make those deliveries. So the, as I stated, the history of this property for various types of in-and-out retail uses shows that this takeout establishment is in harmony with the purpose and intent of the regulations for a CA zone with due consideration for conserving the public health, safety, convenience, and welfare. So it's our position that we do have legal hardship in this situation, and that's demonstrated by the facts here. We've addressed the concerns expressed by this board before, the concerns expressed in the original notes from, or memo from Mr. Hibansky, and we respectfully request that this petition be granted. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Ms. Young?
I'll start with a question to Mr. Hibansky. I'm in receipt of a memorandum prepared by you dated December 19th concerning the application. On page one, paragraph two, you raised some questions about scale of the plans, and do we have adequate information to understand the parking demand? Could you, for the record, tell us if you are satisfied that you now have what you suggested was outstanding on December 19?
Yes. The applicant has submitted plans with this original, with this application to scale. That was a typo from the first time around. It was just never removed in my staff comments. That was an error on my part. The application that was submitted was 100% complete.
Thank you.
My apologies.
Question for the applicant. I believe you referenced me personally in your November 19 memorandum, asking us to revisit the application within six months of having denied it.
Yes.
And you, in my opinion correctly cite, I was the one who had wondered why alternative means had not been explored pursuant to the earlier staff report by Mr. Hibansky. And so I am grateful that you heard that and have reached out to the neighbors. I understand you can't compel people to grant what you're seeking. I wish somebody had taken you up on it, but I understand you've exhausted that, and no one came to the table-
That's right.
...to offer that. I also heard something to the effect of, if you look at the pictures from September 2018, that you could park a tour bus, I think was what I heard you say-
Yes.
...because of the available onsite parking or on-street parking. Could you educate me, if you know the answer? What is the vacancy rate of the adjacent businesses? Are they occupied or are they not? Because that might impact the current availability, as you documented in your photographs.
I haven't looked into the vacancy rate, so I can't specifically answer that question. I can tell you from driving past there, and I've been there a few times, other than this building, there seem to be businesses all around, on both sides of the street.
I'll let my fellow commission members inform me when they take their turn, if they have any knowledge, because that would be of interest to me to understand, how is it that all that parking appears available? Is that customary, or is that unique because of potential vacancy rates? But I-
Yeah, I don't know. Frankly, it was surprising to me, but again, and I went by there more than one time because I was concerned that maybe the first time I went by there, you know, during the lunch hour, that maybe there was some sort of an aberration, but it seems to be consistent.
One more question, if I may?
Sure.
I don't believe you've incorporated by reference the first record. We're just starting fresh today.
Right. I was, understood from Mr. Hibansky that I could not do that, otherwise it would've saved me a lot of time and money in putting it together.
Fair enough. So you can tell me if it's unfair to bring up something I recall being heard then?
No, go ahead.
I recall the number of employees was a question some of us had last time, because that drove potentially the demand for available parking. I thought I recalled a higher number than the four to five you listed this evening. So are you committing that the number of employees at any one time will not exceed five, so we can understand how many spaces will be occupied by the business itself before we invite the customers over?
That is my understanding from Mr. Carcamo. My notes from the previous meeting indicated four or five, and, which is why I, I believe I also indicated that in my November 19th, well, maybe not in the, let's see, not in the November 19th letter, but in the new petition, that's specifically stated.
So I don't want to set up, Mr. Hibansky, with an unenforceable condition of counting heads, but if this board did approve your application, would you accept a condition of no more than five employees at any one time, based upon your perceived need, that that's all you need?
I think that's reasonable. I think, given the size of the space, you know, the size of this takeout operation, it's hard to envision more than about five employees anyway.
That was a yes?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. I said I had no more questions, but I do have one more.
I thought only lawyers do that.
With respect to the, I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought. You were very humorous in your remark about the attorneys. I'll let others ask questions. If it comes back, I'll come back. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Any other members have a question? Mr. DiSulio?
Yes, Attorney Klein, I have a question on map number A100, as submitted. It shows on the right-hand side of the map, a proposed first-floor plan showing deli cases, steam tables, griddles, stoves, fryers, ovens, but no seating and no counters and nothing else. And I was a little concerned at kinda how, if I were to visit this establishment, first of all, I mean, not that it matters to the commission, but what would I be buying, number one? And number two is, where would the register be? Where would the, like, kinda how's the, how's this little space work? I know it's only 900 square feet, but if you can enlighten me, when I come in to buy my food, how does that work, based on what you submitted?
It's correct. There is no seating that's planned.
Right.
This is strictly in-and-out takeout place. And the, your question about where's the cash register-
Yeah, like, where do I pay? Where do I pay for my food? Where do the employees work? I mean, am I walking in, or are the backs of the employees to me? I'm just wondering, from what I'm looking at, I'm unable to understand quite what's going on in the space-
Okay.
...as small as it is, with all the respect.
I believe I understand the question. Mr. Carcamo unfortunately is not here with me tonight, so I can't ask him. I do see, you know, there is some space behind the deli cases and steam table for staff. They would be standing in front of, you know, the oven, fryer, stove, this sort of thing. Where they would set up the cash register is not indicated, that's true, but I would imagine it would be, I mean, it could be set up wherever-
I mean, I assume they're gonna put a counter in here, maybe across these, I'm just guessing. I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, if it's not depicted, I really don't wanna make assumptions, but I guess they would put the cash register wherever is considered both convenient for the flow of people and secure with relation to the doorway, I suppose. I don't know why it's not specifically depicted on here, but my assumption is they'll just put it where logically would work for them. Unless they're giving away free food, but I don't think that's what they're doing.
Ms. Streets?
Thank you. You may have told us in your first presentation, but I don't remember. What are the hours of operation, and what will be the hours?
I just had some contact with Mr. Carcamo's agent right before the meeting started, as I inquired about that, and I was told the hours he's now planning to have are 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM.
Yeah, just a couple of questions. I think we established last time that all deliveries are gonna come through the front door. Is that correct?
Yes.
Do you have provisions for a dumpster, or how are you gonna get rid of the trash? I don't see anything on your plan.
I assume there will be a dumpster, but I-
I couldn't find anything on your exterior plans.
Yeah.
I mean, there's gotta be a way to get rid of it.
Sure.
I can't see him getting a truck in the back. There's no place to get a truck in. How are they gonna handle the garbage?
Yeah, I would, I'm assuming that it will contract with one of, you know, many carting companies here that have dumpster that can be accessed. You know, it's one of those things that lifts up on a fork and tosses it over its head, so to speak.
Well, I think maybe we have- I think maybe we have to establish that, or maybe after the fact with Jay, of some way of finding out, you just can't leave the garbage on the street, you know?
Certainly not.
That's my point, okay?
Certainly not. Yeah, and if the board wants to-
Come up with some kind of a-
...sort of conditions-
Some kind of a, some kind of a plan, okay? And I'll, right, thank you.
That's certainly reasonable.
I'll just add, I'm sorry. I'll just add that to the south, let's see, the southwest portion of the property, there is a concrete ax, concrete walk-
Yeah, I saw it.
...that does provide, you know, it looks like it's a-
Did you see anything else?
Maybe five-foot accessway where a dumpster could be stored in the rear and both sides. But during, you know, if the applicant was to be approved, when they would go to get their health permits, that's something that the health department would require. They wouldn't be able to operate without it.
Ms. Young?
I remembered my question. The prior tenants, I believe Mr. Hibansky recited who some of them were, and I believe they were of a retail use category, and this is something else, correct? Hence the increased parking demand in comparison to the preceding tenants? Is that correct?
I believe so, but my, my purpose in comparing it to the very wide variety of retail uses is the common denominator is foot traffic, in-and-out foot traffic of customers, as opposed to, you know, just an office use where people come in in the morning, sit at their desks, and go out at lunchtime and at the end of the day. So it's been, the history of this place going back many, many decades includes a lot of foot traffic, and foot traffic, certainly in this day and age, is brought in by car.
So again, just to understand, maybe to Mr. Hibansky, if a retail tenant wanted to occupy this same space, could they, without needing us, in terms of parking relief? Is it because it's a takeout restaurant that there's a higher parking demand, hence the need for variance from us?
No, I believe the last known use requi, I don't remember offhand what the last known use is. I believe it was a res, no, it wasn't a restaurant. But I remember the zoning enforcement officer had some early discussions with the applicant and explained that the parking requirement was different, therefore require, therefore the parking calculation for the takeout restaurant would apply.
That would make sense to me, because typically people enjoy the pre-existing non-conforming conditions, and one tenant in the same use group can replace another without having to seek relief, and-
Right. 12.5.7.1 specifically addresses drive-in restaurants and takeout establishments.
And what does it say?
It says, "One space for each 100 square feet of gross floor area, including any outdoor service area." So that-
Hence the nine.
...836 square feet, so you've got eight plus, so it's nine off-street spaces, and, but there is no outdoor service area here, so that doesn't add anything. There's no seating.
So again, just trying to understand, this town of Stratford is not depriving the property owner from using the building. He could use it if he found a tenant that met the former use group. The reason you're here is you're asking for a quote-unquote "more intense" use group that requires more parking, and that's what's triggering the need for relief. And just for the record, did I hear you say your hardship to obtain that relief is the lot area and lot width?
That's certainly part of it, yes. Lot area with depth, and the fact that the building's been there since 1900, and the way it's constructed on, and the way it, the space that it occupies on that lot, it's just, it's just not possible to put off-street parking space there.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, I have a question. So should this be approved? Are you gonna have designated signs for these parking spaces?
No.
How would that be?
My understanding is, and I think that was discussed at the last meeting, that, and I actually mentioned at the end of the petition here, that the petitioner understands that off-street parking spaces are not reserved for their customers-
Right.
...or for their employees. I did notice, by the way, going neighborhood, there's a, I think it's a laundromat in there that actually has a sign-up on a pole that looks sort of official that says, you know, for their, that it's, spaces on the street are for their customers, which boggles the mind, but that's certainly not a liberty that Mr. Carcamo was going to take. He understands, he can't do that.
Right.
Ms. Streets?
I'm just curious, do you have any knowledge about why the other tenants were unwilling to lease space?
I mean, why couldn't find another tenant with a-
Why the other tenants of the property, their neighbors?
Oh, why they were not willing to-
To lease space.
Um, my answer would be a bit of speculation, but I can give you that, if that's, if you want me-
I'm just, if you have any, yeah.
I mean, I didn't, I did not have the direct contact with them, but I assume that the number of off-street spaces that they have are quite limited, and they don't feel that they have enough wheelroom to give up any of them.
Any other questions from the board? Hearing none? Is there anyone present that would like to speak in favor of this petition? Seeing none, is there anyone here that would like to speak in opposition to this petition? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to close?
Is there a mo- Yes, motion to close by Ms. Young, second. Second by Mr. DiSulio, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passed unanimously. Ms. Streets, please give us the pleasure of reading the second petition, please. Petition number two.
Petition from 314 Oak Bluff Avenue, petition of James and Tammy Cranich, seeking a site plan review and waiver of section 4.2 regarding the side setback to construct a first and second-floor addition incidental to a single-family dwelling in an RS4 zone. The hardship being a non-conforming lot, existing house has a similar setback, small addition to accommodate bedroom for elderly parents.
Thank you. Good evening, sir. Can you name an address and affiliation to this application, please?
Yes, my name is Lee Overland. Name my firm's Lee Overland Architect, and I'm representing my clients Tammy and Jim Cranich, and Jim's mom, and Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. As you've just indicated, the, my client purchased this house recently, not aware that it was not, is a non-conforming lot, 50 feet instead of 60, and the existing house was at a 5.4-foot-
Excuse me one second, do you have your certificates of mailing?
I'm sorry.
The certificates of mailing? Thank you.
Do you have certificates?
Yeah, the green card.
Copies are, yup, the copies are there.
Thank you, sir. Please proceed.
Okay. So the existing residence is about 5.4 feet in lieu of the 10-foot side setback, and what my client is trying to do is, on the first floor, there's a very small bedroom, and since Jim's mom is living with them and is unable to navigate the stairs, we want- and since Jim's mom is living with them and is unable to navigate the stairs, we wanted to expand the existing bedroom on the first floor. So we're moving it out just seven feet to make it large enough to have a closet for a wheelchair, as well as keeping it in line with the existing side setback. So we would stay with that 5.4 feet continuing on the left side of the house. The existing lot, as I said, is 50 feet instead of 60 feet wide. We're well within the 30-foot building height. The house is only 21 feet. We're also well within the lot coverage of, we have 18 and a half percent in lieu of 25 percent. And so what we're requesting is the relief of the side setback so we can put the addition on to the back of the house. It's approximately seven feet deep, as I indicated, by about, I think it's about 11 feet wide. And we're also on the second floor, the existing master bedroom, while we're doing construction, we've raised the roof slightly to give the master bedroom a larger feel as well for the client. And so I respectfully request that you grant this, and if there's any questions or comments.
Does the board have any questions? Ms. Young?
Good evening. Have you seen Mr. Hibansky's December 19 memorandum to us summarizing your application?
I'm not sure.
Here's a copy. Highlighted in yellow was something that I wanted to ask you, so maybe you can read out loud what's highlighted, and then tell us your answer to the question?
Sure.
You can keep that.
Thank you. So the question is, have we explored any alternative options? And this bedroom is on that left side of the house already, the existing first-floor bedroom. The other side of the house is the kitchen and dining room. So there really wasn't any other place to, to put this. And we also did go over to the adjacent neighbors, the neighbor where this addition would be going on, the left side?
324?
That is 324. And the neighbor on the right side, as well as a neighbor adjacent behind, because the water and the street is on the front. And all three of those neighbors have signed a, I'll just read this, then give it to you. "I've reviewed the plans that Tammy and Jim Craneage are requesting a variance for. We feel these plans will be in keeping and an asset to our neighborhood. We have no objection if the zoning board grants this variance." So these are all the adjacent neighbors that have signed and dated that...
You're willing to make this part of the record?
Yes.
Thank you. No other questions? Thank you.
Does the board have any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone in the tenants that would like to speak in favor of this petition? Step up to the mic, please. State your name and your address for the record, please. And your affiliation to this.
I am Jim Craneage. I'm not sure if I count as someone who is...
Excuse me?
My name is James Craneage. I am the applicant. I'm not sure if I count as someone who is, who is a...
Well, it certainly would be strange if you were to oppose your own petition, but no, you're fine.
Yes, I would like to support my petition, please.
You're absolutely fine.
And my wife and my mother as well. And they can come up if you'd like. Am I good?
Thank you, sir. Anyone else would like to speak in, in favor of this petition? Good evening.
My name is Tammy Craneage. I'm the owner and also the co-applicant of the petition. And I just want to say that, you know, my mother-in-law has Parkinson's disease, and this variance is going to make her living space a lot feel like home, whereas right now it's a small cape and it's a smaller room. So it's going to give her a lot of her independence that she's, she's, she lost. So, thank you.
Anyone else here want to speak in the favor of this petition? Is there anyone here that would like to speak in opposition to this petition? Seeing none. Do we have a motion to close?
Ask the follow-up question?
Yes, Ms. Young, follow-up question?
Ask applicant a follow-up question?
Yes, follow-up question to the applicant?
Right. So as part of your closing statements, if you will, can you remind the board members, what is your hardship unique to the property, not necessarily the people who own the property?
Yeah, the hardship was twofold. One is the existing width of the property is 50 feet in lieu of the required 60, and the existing house is already at 5.4 feet in lieu of the required 10 feet. And we're just trying to extend out the exact, the exact width of the existing bedroom. We're not trying to make it any wider. We're just trying to make the exact width of that bedroom, so we can make it large enough so to ease, as we indicated, Jim's mom's ability to live in that house and get into a closet and not have to be on a floor above the first floor.
Thank you. Any further questions?
Motion to close?
Motion to close by Ms. Young, second. Second by Mr. De Silio. All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. De Silio, will you please read petition number three?
75 Sulik Terrace, petition of Raduslaw Zaleski, seeking a site plan review and waiver of 311 regarding the maximum allowable height for an accessory structure to legalize a second-floor addition to an existing garage in an RS4 zone. Hardship is stated as, I want to build storage space above the existing garage.
Thank you. Good evening, sir. State your name, your address, and your affiliation with this petition.
My name is Radusaw Zaleski. I'm living on 75 Sulik Terrace. I'm co-owner this property, and I tried to build up the, I already tried to build up storage above my garage, but I would stop by inspector, so I just came today and tried to get the waiver for permission for finish the project, event to add some changes, whatever is possible to do. So it's like storage, now it's 18 and a half feet above the ground to the middle point of the gable. So I send certified match to my neighbors. They don't have any issues. I asked them before even I start the process, so they're okay with that. Nobody say anything so far. So I can say that's, try.
Does the board have any questions? Ms. Young?
Excuse me, Mr. Hibansky, looking at your December 19 memorandum to the board concerning this project, you raised some questions about additional information that would have been useful to you to evaluate the application. Has anything changed since you wrote that?
No.
Thank you.
Sir, can I ask, well, why did you start building without a permit?
I did, my fault. I didn't ask anybody, and I was thinking there is no issue. The plan was put the permit, but I didn't know about the rules that is 12 feet on. So that's all I can say. It's, I just start the project, I needed some small, some kind of storage on, above the garage, because this is only space which I can use it. I don't want to do anything else, so.
Mr. Hoydic?
Yeah, and the existing garage now, and I don't know if you've installed anything with your addition, what mechanicals do you have? Do you have plumbing there? Do you have electricity there? What's, what's in the building now?
No, it's, it's existed, it's built up above the existing garage, and it's only electricity there. That's all. And I'm not planning to do anything else.
Now, for safety's sake, is, is the existing garage built on a footing?
Yes.
There's a footing underneath the, the sidewalls?
Yes, it's a...
And there's a slab for the garage?
Yes, slap inside and footing around, then walls.
And how, if, if you were going to finish this, how are you going to access the second story? Stairwell on the inside of the garage?
Yes. I don't want to go on, I think outside. It's inside, it's going to be inside in the garage.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions from the board? Ms. Young?
Mr. Chair, I'll throw this out to you, and you can tell me if you'd like Mr. Hibansky to answer it. So you heard my first question, asking, have we learned anything more since the December 19 memorandum, where Mr. Hibansky indicates that the building elevations are not drawn to scale, quote, "Therefore making it impossible to determine accuracy of the proposed garage height." If we're being asked to grant height relief, but we don't know what we're granting, how can we do our job?
Mr. Hibansky?
Well, I think, I don't, I think, I'll just reiterate what I said in my staff comments, is that it's, you're not going to be able to do that without accurately drawn plans. I mean, in concept, you have the idea as to what's happening, but in terms of accuracy, you don't, you don't know. And I don't know, I should say.
Do you want to tell us anything more than what we know about the proposed heights, that we understand what relief you're seeking?
So the measurement, which I show, what's left, the plant is 18 and a half to the middle of points, so it's practically, let's say, six and a half feet above right high, what's supposed to be by the rules, 311. So that's all I can say. And it's gable roof, I'm not sure what is exactly supposed to be the answer. You asking about the size, or you asking about the height?
The height.
So the rose is, I believe, is 12 feet up to middle point of the roof, the gable roof. Now have 18 and a half, so it's six and a half higher than supposed to be. That is the answer.
Thank you.
Mr. Zaleski, have you considered another configuration to accommodate your storage?
But we still...
Instead of going up on top, have you considered...
Not really. I would like to, I would like to stay like that, so it's not taking another space on the floor, on the ground. I like, this way, I like more above the garage, what is existing construction.
My question is, Jay, when the zoning enforcement officer went on the premises, did they conduct an investigation? Did they find out anything what was going on inside the structure?
The only information that I received was just that there was construction being done without a permit. You know, no indication of living quarters, or any mechanicals or anything run to the, to the garage. So it was really just the construction without a permit, and that there was a potential that it was going to be higher than what was allowed.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the tenants that would like to speak in favor of this petition? Seeing none. Is there anyone in presence that would like to speak in opposition to this petition? Seeing that, do we have a motion to close? Motion to close by Mr. De Silio, second by Mr. Hoydic. All in favor? Mr. Hoydic, will you please read our last petition, please?
Mr. Chairman, item four, 225 Lordship Boulevard, petition of 225 Lordship Boulevard LLC, seeking a site plan review and variances of the minimum parking requirement referencing 7.3 and 12. Wall sign location, reference 16.6.51B. More than one freestanding sign, reference 16.6.52D. Maximum allowable height of freestanding sign, reference 16.6.5.2. Maximum allowable signage for a freestanding sign, reference 16.6.5.2. And the setback for a freestanding sign, 16.6.5.2B. To construct drive-through restaurant and retail store in a CA zone, the stated hardship is proposed mixed-use development incompatible with zoning regulations.
Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Raymond Rizzi. I'm happy to be before you, representing 225 Lordship Boulevard LLC. We did receive staff's comments today, and I'd like to withdraw a couple of variances. We've taken into some of concerns of staff. We are going to limit the amount of variances that we're going to seek tonight, and try and work with our tenant to see if we can work with the signage variances, meaning the height variance and the two freestanding signs. So the only variances we're going to be requesting tonight are with regard to the shared parking regulation, and with regard to the signage, rear fascia signage being permitted on one of these buildings. And as I explained to you, the setup of the, we, the setup of the property, you'll, you'll understand why we really don't have a rear fascia, because of where it's located. What I'd like to do, and I know this, this commission has been great, we've been before you before on this project, if I can hand out some pictures. And one of the major concerns, I think a couple of the commissioners brought up, and if you've been by the property, was that they wanted to make sure before we started going on this thing, that the conference, the old conference center was down, and the old conference center is down. The property has been cleaned up significantly. So commissioners who weren't on this commission, who were before you previously, this was the old Stratford Hotel, Lordship Hotel. This is what it used to look like. This was the conference center, which the, this commission, when they granted some previous variance with regard to the number of uses on the site, asked to make sure that before you started, we got this thing occupied, they wanted to make sure that this conference center was down. This is what it looked like, and this is what it looked like today. So today, as you can see, it is tremendously cleaned up. It looks, it's a, and then we have even cleaned up the front of the site. It used to be just long weeds. We cleaned it up. We've graded it off. And we've added also our landscaping to the rear of the site. And then I just have copies of the adjoining properties, because we're very much in a commercial slash industrial area. So what's very interesting is, we are before you, seeking a variance of your regulation concerning shared parking. I have a copy of the regulation, which I'd like to point out to everybody, and explain, and then I also have a parking analysis. I think that should be enough. So what happens in Stratford, when you have 200 parking spaces, you're in... Do they not give you? Yeah, more of the same. Yeah, yeah, it's just one page. It's section 12.5.16. And what's interesting, it basically states, "The commission may subject to a special case approval on the same or on continuous lots containing not less than 200 spaces, where the lot or lots contain two or more distinct uses, one of which shall be the retail or office, and the other includes, but is not limited to, retail or office, churches, and other places of worship," may go to the P and Z and ask for relief for a 30% reduction in the parking because of the shared use. What our variance is really basically saying is, we don't have 200 spaces, but we would like to take advan, make the, be able to make the application to the P and Z to take advantage of this regulation, because if anybody has four or more distinct uses in really compatible times with regard to the parking, that we believe this project fits the muster. So we have 163 spaces. What I did do was a little parking analysis to make it a little easier, so that we walk through, we can basically explain what we're looking at. So we pass these out. What I basically talked, showed you is that our project has, you know, the conversion of the old hotel into 69 units, 57 one-bedrooms, 12 two-bedrooms. We also have approval, we're in the process of getting, going through the actual construction permit process, for a self-storage facility in the back. We have all approvals for that. We have, we're going for approximately 9,000 split retail store, and a drive-through self-service restaurant, as you can see, it's labeled Sonic on the application. Now, we have probably, like I said, the reason, this is the perfect example of why this regulation was permitted. I think... I think they tried to limit where it would be exposed, and I think that's why it's good we're before the ZBA versus going for a text change, because this approval would be limited to these uses and this property and these individual set of circumstances versus applying around the entire town. So, the hundred and ten spaces, we believe are more, if it's more than sufficient to stand on its own. And, and what happens is, with the fifty-seven one bedrooms, that one and a half spaces per unit, and two spaces per unit for the two bedrooms, we believe we are more than adequately parked for that site. Most importantly, the, we're not really, we're not on the train line, people that are going to live there are basically going to drive to work. These are all market rate rentals, this is going to be a very successful project, but we feel the people will have cars. Meaning, during the day, most people will be on the road and prior, prior to nine, you know, between nine and six or seven at night, there's going to be a lot of room with regard to parking for the, that's going to be leftover from the parking from the apartments. We also have this self-storage facility, and I think I would probably gamble pretty heavily that I don't ever see any self-storage facility that has ever had all twenty-four of its spaces used at the same time. Self-storage typically is, as you know, people coming and going, you'll tend to see that, a couple of people coming in one at a time, average lengths of these stays are six months to even two years. People basically put their stuff there, they don't go and check it every day, they, when they move, they leave, and they come and they go, and we're only going to have, I think, what is it, two employees, Janie? Basically, two employees that would use the spaces throughout the day. It is as low an impact use as you can imagine. So we're, but we have that twenty-four spaces allocated to that. Next, we have retail of nine thousand square feet, which is one unit per, one, one space per two hundred and fifty, fifty square feet. Primarily going to be used nine, two, five, six, but certainly, in peak times, will be when the residential's not at its peak. And then we have a drive-through restaurant, which is only twenty-three hundred square feet, and we need one per one hundred square feet. I do a ton of drive-through applications for a lot of the fast food projects, and it's interesting is that, when you look at drive-through restaurants, they require twenty-four spaces, but the Sonics, the McDonald's, the Burger Kings are up to, I would say, seventy percent of their business going through the drive-through at this point. So we have the adequate queuing, our project fits very well. It's going to be busy in the morning, when the retail, and busy maybe then at lunch, and then toward the dinner hour, when this slows down throughout the day, when people are coming and going without parking, and then this area here is going to be used for just the warehouse, which we don't believe, it's mostly going to be the warehouse and parking. The applicant, we've, we've switched our plan, I'm going to submit this plan, it's nine, sorry. The plan that's in front of you, and we'll do the, first one to get the other things, you know, I don't know. So I'm going to give you Mike Galante, who was a traffic engineer, did a park, detailed parking analysis, of course, which I'll submit to you. And originally, what was submitted, showed this all open in this big landscaping area here. Mike's concern was that, he said, let's try and segregate the retail and push a lot of our residential parking to the rear. So what we did is we did the same number of parking spaces, is what we've done is moved this landscape area from here to here, which basically will allow all of your residential back here, keep out your retail and your drive-through. Have, and keep in mind, really, our main entrance to the building for most parking will be, for most of the parking will be through the rear, which you have, we have all these spaces. Then what you have is the retail and the drive-through up front. This is going to be the entrance, basically the entrance to the retail, and you're going to have a very significant amount of parking at that, at that location. It keeps the rest away from the entrance and exit, it doesn't interfere at all with the circulation from the drive-through. To make these improvements, Mike liked about that one, it really gets everybody the parking required, doesn't sacrifice parking, doesn't sacrifice landscaping, but basically, kind of keeps people where they should be, yet at night and in the mornings, when we do have to work, we have to do some residential, still allow the residential to use the spaces, the spaces that surround. So I'm going to submit to you Mr. Galante's report, which basically states that there's, in summary, that there's adequate parking, and talks about, basically, the analysis we went through. So, it's actually pretty short, but what I, what I will basically take you to is, is, his report's very short, and it said, is our opinion that the applicant's site development plan for mixed-use development comprising one hundred and sixty-three parking spaces, actually, one hundred and sixty-three parking spaces, adequate to accommodate a total of one hundred and sixty-one adjusted peak parking demand, and that will be generated from the proposed multi-use development in a weekday evening of the month of November, representing the typical peak time periods in the development program. So what they basically did was they just looked at the uses, looked at the, at the parking that we're providing, and from a professional opinion versus me just saying we have enough parking, analyzed this. I believe your staff has looked at this and also feels that we have adequate parking in this instance. But what I tried to show you where our hardship is, is that technically to take advantages of the shared parking, you need to have two hundred spaces. And where this is not, doesn't really work for us, or is, we believe, a hardship upon our application, is you can see, we have four very compatible uses that would allow, which has a tremendous effect, ability to take care of, shared parking. We need a difference of thirty-two spaces. In other words, we have one sixty-three, total parking required is one ninety-five. Our percentage of reduction between the spaces required versus, spaces required versus spaces provided is sixteen point four percent, which is almost half of what we would be able to take advantage of, if we could take advantage of the shared parking. So if we had a bigger project, we could get less parking. And that's kind of the inconsistency in the regulation when it applies to us. So then what I did is, I said, to best show you how this doesn't really make sense, is if you look at the three examples I gave you. If we had, if our property was big enough, or we had a project that required three hundred spaces, and we could get a variance of ninety, not variance, we could apply to the commission to get ninety spaces reduced, and only have two hundred and ten spaces for something that requires three hundred spaces. And then what I tried to do was just give you an example that shows if we were to take advantage of a thirty percent reduction, which we're not asking for, whereas there's only sixteen point four percent, total parking, if we had a, a project, a mixed-use project that required two hundred and thirty spaces, we would be entitled to a thirty percent reduction of sixty-nine spaces, which would give us, which means we would only have one hundred and sixty-one spaces. So we're, I wanted to show that, because I wanted to show you that we're at one hundred and sixty-three, and we only have one ninety-five. The regulation, if you can get to two hundred spaces, would allow you to a great reduction. So in other words, it's, it, because we're limited by the size of our property, and actually the way we've developed this project, we think is very parking sensitive for them all to work together. And the last example I gave you, it said, if they didn't have the two hundred, two hundred parking spaces, which I think is just a, I'm not sure that it was a, I'm not sure where the two, I don't think anybody knows where the two hundred number came from. And then I wasn't sure if it was, when the way it reads, whether you have to have two hundred spaces or require two hundred spaces to be eligible, but we're treating as if you need two hundred spaces, and we're here for, to request you to say that we, we'd like to be able to take advantage of the shared parking arrangement with only one hundred and sixty-three. But if the total parking space is required for one hundred and ninety-five, and a thirty percent reduction would allow you to go down to one hundred and thirty-seven spaces. All in all, we believe because of the compatibility of our uses, a self-storage facility that basically takes, for the most part, if we get ten cars a day throughout the day will be a lot, let alone twenty-four dedicated parking spaces attributed to us. Then we have, as I said, one hundred and ten spaces toward our residential. Keep in mind, fifty-seven, so seventy-five percent of these spaces, these units are one bedroom. So it's not as if we have sixty-nine spaces and there's two and three bedrooms that have multiple cars. We believe that we have more than enough parking for our residential, on top of the fact that the demand for those spaces is going to be compatible with the demand of the residential and the retail. And then we have a residential, a retail, and I believe we're also overparked because of the drive-through restaurant, where we believe, and from what I've seen, the drive-through world, seventy percent of your business tends to go through the drive-through. So basically, those twenty-four spaces, which were designed for, that's a high, one space per basically, you know, per thousands, per, per hundred square feet, which is ten spaces per thousand, were really designed for when you had these big sit-down restaurants. And the fast food, drive-through, the reason they're drive-through is, they get the turnover. But those people, that seventy percent of our business will be going through this drive-through. For all those reasons, we would respectfully request this commission grant this application, which doesn't give us our approval, it just allows us to proceed to the next step, which would be to go to the P and Z and say, we would like to take advantage of this shared parking arrangement. So we need your approval to apply to them. They could still say no, and what we're asking you to do is say, look, because of this unique project, because of the fact that we can't be big enough to take advantage of this you, of this regulation, we would ask for a variance, so that we can make application to the P and Z under this regulation for a, a reduction of only sixteen point four percent. So that takes you through the park. At last, the other variance that we're requesting, and the only other variance we're requesting tonight, it's, I can show you, but we, we're going to have basically a wall sign on our different fascia, and this is a corner lot, let me give you the regulation, which I think is pretty interesting. I haven't seen this before, but, one second. So if you look at your wall sign at regulation, sixteen point six point five point one.
Just put your name on it, and use it when I drop this.
Sure. It may be taking a dive there, shortly. I don't know, it's, it's, it's in slides, I don't know. Yeah, you know what, do you mind if I put this here? It's sliding on the top. Please let me, so everybody can see. Is that okay to everybody? I'm going to turn it a little bit, everybody got shot out? Good? Okay, so, the building here-
Can you use the microphone, Sam?
Sure. It's a good thing I have long arms. So, the front building here, the Sonic building, we basically have no rear fascia. So if you look at your regulation, your regulations with regard to wall signs says, wall signs are permitted on the rear fascia of the building only when such signs face or primarily intend to be visible from Connecticut Turnpike, and shall not exceed one square foot of signage for each lineal foot of the building's width. Signs on the rear fascia of the building shall not be illuminated when facing a residential area. Here's our problem. I can't even begin to think about which one's the rear fascia. We have two streets, so we have frontage on two sides. We don't have an entrance on the front, so basically, let me make sure this is, so I can give you this better. So our parking is here, and this would technically be considered our rear, but it's really our front because of the circulation. It's not this front, which, which faces Lordship Boulevard, it's not the one that faces Watson Boulevard, and it's not the face here. So the only rear fascia we have is here, and can't see it from ninety-five, and it's not really a rear face. And our hardship here is, it's basically a corner lot, where we don't really, although we have a rear elevation, we don't really have a rear elevation when it comes to use of the building. Because in effect, we also have a residential structure that faces it. We have access behind the building, and we have eighteen different other reasons why. I, I can't understand how that, how I could call that the rear of the building. It's going to be designed as if it's a front of a building, we're basically going to have a building with, with three to four fronts. The only building, the only part of the building that won't be dressed up like a front will basically be over here, but that's either a side or a front fascia, because that's where you get our circulation for our drive-through. So we would ask to have relief from this requirement, that we don't, cannot put a sign on the rear fascia of our building, and basically, it's because we really don't have, our hardship is, based on the unique design, the unique character of this, where it's, this building is situated, doesn't really have a rear. Tell you what, make Christmas, make Christmas present next year, it's going to be easy. Sorry, Pat. So if you look at the elevations- You know what, I'm going to do this. So, I'm going to get you the elevations proposed. So you have signage on a front door, which is basically the rear of the building, that's the length of the building. We're going to have a little bit of signage where the drive-through will end up going through. So our front is kind of our rear. So there's the front of the building.
Okay, Mr. Rizzi-
Yes.
I'm sorry, I'm in the middle of your presentation, I'm trying to, I'm losing my orientation. On that picture right there-
On the picture you're showing us right now, the double-door entry, does that face-
That's not with regard to the signage required.
No, no, but does, does that face the Sonic double-door entry, according to my plans? Or does that face the apartment building? I'm, I'm losing perspective, I'm sorry.
That is this, that's this elevation.
Oh, yeah, so there's the entrance, right. So the entrance, it faces the Sonic, the double doors?
Correct.
Okay. It says entrance on my plan, but when you showed that other plan with the extra, the different parking configuration, it confused me for a moment. Thanks.
Yeah, this is, so we have, I will give you the modified plan consistently, Mr.-
Sorry for your interruption.
No, no, Libby.
No, it is-
Confused myself. And it's hard, because this is just showing this change from the, here is the original submission.
I'm sorry, does Mr. Hibansky have, or is he getting for the first time whatever we were just handed?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
He's getting it for the first time, or really hasn't?
This was submitted when, on Monday, Friday, was it Fri, last Friday?
We just give, we, we're not, you have already had your plans.
Thank you.
So this is what was originally designed. With Mr. Galante's recommendations, we now get a little better segregation of our parking.
Distinction between this plan we're just getting now and the one we got in our packet, can you, again, clarify what's the difference?
There is no change in the number of spaces. There is a change in the plan that was submitted with the application, had a landscaped area directly in front of the apartment building, and allowed for connectivity from here, from the retail to the rear. Mr. Galante, in an effort to keep things segregated, so that we wouldn't, we would have people parking, he thought, in a more orderly fashion, suggested that the landscaped area move to the side of the building, provide a buffer from the retail area to the residential parking area, main residential parking area. And that is the only change. So you take this, this square here is moved from- So you take this, this square here is moved from here to here to better help the circulation.
I'll let you continue.
And I'd be hap- you know, it's an, it's an, it's an interesting concept. It's a concept plan that we think works, and we think it's one that's deserving of the shared, to be able to take advantage of the shared parking, uh, regulation. One of the things towns are really striving for, and I'm sure Jay's told you, is especially if, this is not big-box retail, but is staying away from these asphalt parking fields. And we believe this regulation, we, the ability for us to be able to take advantage of this regulation will leave us the ability to actually provide the parking that's gonna be used versus excess parking that will just sit, sit there as, uh, straight, straight asphalt. So, I'd be happy to answer any additional questions, but keep in mind, our variance is just to allow us to take advantage of the shared parking regulation, but it doesn't mean that the P and Z has to grant our special permit. But it allows us to even make an application, taking advantage of this. And as I said, it's about half, a little more than half of what's required by the regulation. So, the regulation requires two hundred spaces. We have, to take advantage of it, we have one hundred and sixty-three. If you grant us a variance, we have the ability to apply to the P and Z for shared parking. Doesn't mean they'll give it to us, but it allows us to, to actually apply. And we believe it's warranted by the compatibility of the uses. With regard to the signage, it's, we have a unique design, a unique location, and the requirement of no signage on the rear facia of a building doesn't really, wouldn't really necessarily, would be a hardship on us because we really don't have a rear facia, and we have exposure to, um, the public, basically, on all four corners. For all those reasons, we respectfully request this commission grant the application, and I'd have to continue, continue to confuse you if I have to. If I can shed any light, I'm, I'm, I'm happy to.
Do the board have any questions? Ms. Young?
I think I see Attorney Florick in the doorway. Is he with us tonight?
Attorney Florick, your presence is requested.
I'm sure he was listening while talking. Attorney Florick, Attorney Rizio has been describing to us his request for variances at two twenty-five Lordship Boulevard, and one of the requests he's making is relief to twelve point five point sixteen, which he brought copies of, concerning shared use of parking facilities. And if I understood him correctly, correct me if I get this wrong, Attorney Rizio, the way the regulation reads, you can't ask for shared parking unless your starting point is a requirement of two hundred parking spaces, which his is not, and therefore he's seeking relief from us to be allowed to go to the zoning commission to ask for shared parking, which makes me ask a question of the town attorney's office. Can you seek relief through the ZBA for something that's, you know, prohibited, for lack of a better description, because you don't qualify, to get you in front of the zoning commission to then ask, "Does the zoning commission believe you meet the criteria that warrants relief and warrants shared parking?" Does that make sense?
Uh, yeah, I think I understand the question. I, I read Jay's staff comments before the meeting. I thought it was two hundred and eleven spaces, or...
That seems to be a debatable question, which we haven't gotten to yet.
Well, the, the ZBA is, has liberal discretion in interpreting, interpreting its own regulations. That discretion has some limitations. Of course, is, is, if, if the ZBA would like a more formal opinion, something more that we could offer at, than, as I stand right here, I suppose you could table the application and we can get you for that, that for you next month. I, I, so I guess what you're telling me is that there's some disagreement as to how many spaces are actually required for this application, whether it's over two hundred or under two hundred.
Uh, as I understand it correct, I believe I heard Attorney Rizio says we require one hundred and ninety-five.
Uh-huh.
Uh, Jay Herbansky's staff report suggests a higher number, then we got a traffic engineer who has yet a third number.
Uh-huh.
So we have yet to figure out what is the actual number. But let's assume for argument's sake it's less than two hundred. I believe that's why Attorney Rizio's seeking our relief, to ask, "I would like shared parking, but I don't appear to qualify to even ask the question of the zoning commission, to get to them to ask the question, 'I need you.'" And that's a tortured argument, in my opinion, but I just wonder if it's a legal argument. Do we have the authority to allow someone to use a provision that wasn't intended for them? People apparently quickly find getting this wrong.
Just, I'll jump in because, but I...
Please do.
It's really no different than if we came to you for a variance, for a setback, and you require a setback of twenty feet, and the ZBA gives us a setback of ten feet. We're not permitted twenty feet, but we get ten feet, and the P and Z denies us because they don't like the size, the location of the building. In this instance, we have, all we're having is the ability to seek a application in connection with a, same with, if I, if I, I couldn't go to the, I couldn't go to the P and Z with my building unless I get your variance on the setback. In this instance, I can't go to the P and Z with an application for shared parking unless I get a variance from two hundred spaces down to one hundred and sixty-three.
So, I didn't interrupt, but I, I don't share your analogy to same thing as setback relief, but going back to trying to inform Attorney Florick, you know, what it is we're actually talking about, maybe we should get a fix on that question. Is it your testimony that you are, you have a requirement of less than two hundred parking spaces? That's your starting point?
Yes.
And, Mr. Herbansky, is, is that a shared opinion with the P and Z staff?
Well, based on the parking calculation, and, and I think I see where the applicant, it may be a little bit confused, for a drive-through, for a drive-through restaurant, it's one space for one every hundred, uh, one, one space for every one hundred square feet. Whenever there's a drive-through added, a drive-through triggers that used to be considered a restaurant, which goes from one hundred, uh, one space for one hundred square feet to one space per sixty feet. So the actual total number for the Sonic is, the required number of spaces is forty. Forty total spaces, making the total number two hundred and eleven spaces. Now, I think what the applicant, and you might be able to correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think he, I don't, I'm not sure he's going to the zoning commission to request the shared parking, uh, regulation to apply to this application. I think he's trying, he might be trying to draw a comparison from this project to a shared, a project that would be subject to the shared parking regulation, and those, the percentages between this and one that was larger, two hundred and ten spaces required. Is that correct?
It's kind of both.
Wow, I, you lost me.
I mean, we ha- we can't make applications to P and Z for this without a relief that we have less than two hundred spaces. Correct?
Mm-hmm.
And, and I can't, and this commission would have the ability to say, "We have the ability to, to give you a variance to be able to go to one hundred and sixty-three spaces to make an application for shared use." The commission would like, because it, it's confusing on two fronts, we would be happy to table, not table, continue the application, because I, I want to be able to have input and come back to you, work with the town attorney and work with staff to confirm the figures, and confirm, and make you comfortable, or the commission, the whole commission comfortable, that what, with what we're asking for is, is something that you have the power to grant.
Well, thank you for that offer, but just to make sure I've understood what everyone's said thus far, I believe I heard, uh, Mr. Herbansky indicate, he believes your required parking is a higher number than what your charts suggest.
Correct.
Because of how he computes the drive-through component, potentially putting you over the two hundred space threshold. So if, I'm not sure it was, but if that was part of your question, give me something only people with over two hundred are worthy of. I think Mr. Herbansky just helped you by putting you over that threshold.
Well, yes and no. Here's the hard part about this, and maybe we'll talk, Jay and I had this discussion before. The regulation, we're doing this at a kind of an extra, extra caution, because when you read the reg, "The commission may, subject to a special case approval, approve the shared use of parking and/or loading spaces by two or more establishments on the same or on continuous lots, contiguous lots containing not less than two hundred spaces." So it can be interpreted one of two ways. Something that you can't apply unless you have two hundred spaces, which means at three hundred, if you have, as long as you have two hundred spaces, you could go up to two ninety or something and come down to two hundred. But if you, but you can't apply unless you actually have two hundred pa- sparks, spaces available. The other way to read it is that if you're required to have two hundred spaces, you may take advantage of the shared park- Jay went, Jay and I had this discussion an hour ago, maybe two hours ago.
Yeah, and, and it's...
And, and we, and I just said, "I want to be cautious, I want to come before the commission." Um, and I don't want to get to a P and Z and somebody say, or get an appeal, I don't think, I don't know if it's gonna appeal, we have support of the entire neighborhood of this project, but, um, I just didn't want to have any discrepancies in, in the, the regulation's vague as to what it really means. Does it mean you have to have two hundred spots to qualify? Or does it mean you have to be required to have two hundred spots to qualify?
I can appreciate if you only gotten to that discussion an hour ago. Mr. Herbansky didn't have the time to research that answer.
Well, I, I can tell you, it's been longstanding practice for the, the planning and zoning staff, that it's, you have to have two hundred spaces present.
Physical.
Physical, in order to use it, not, not two hundred plus required. I mean, I can see where the applicant is interpreting the regulation in, in that way, but I can just tell you that, that's the way that staff has done it prior to my, my arriving.
So, because I think past practice matters, assuming that's the practice, that, uh, your starting point is, do you physically have two hundred spaces? I believe everyone agrees that this applicant has one hundred and sixty-three. That's not debatable. I think still hope for debate is how many are they required?
Hmm.
So that brings me back to where I started. Are you, Attorney Rizio, seeking the standard of relief to parking? You require X, but we only can provide Y, give us the relief? Or instead, or is this a more of a process question? Allow us to put forth an argument to another board, seeking shared parking so that we don't have the high demand? That's the part, I'm still not clear what, what you're actually asking this board for.
Well, this board...
I don't think it was hard, but...
Well, because if you look at it either way, you can either say, "You, I'm looking to reduce my parking from two hun- two hundred and eleven or one ninety-five to one sixty-three because of what this is," and ignore the shared parking regulation. Or am I looking for relief to take advantage of the shared parking regulation? So in other words, it's...
I have some need.
We had thought that because we had, we had had distinctive uses, this had come in under a mixed-use regulation, that we had thought that we would look for a relief under the shared, of the shared-use parking facility to let us go forward. We can certainly, what I like to do, and it, and it's, it can go either way, and I thought the easier way to do, not the easier way, but the appropriate way was to be able to take advantage of a shared parking regulation would be to qualify for. We also have the ability to ignore it and just say, "Look, we're required two hundred and eleven or one ninety-five, we're only, only needing one sixty-three," regardless of what your shared parking regulation says.
So I'm not trying to be argumentative, I'm just trying to force you to come to terms with the question you're asking for.
What we asked for, was relief to apply for the shared parking, to take advantage of the shared parking regulation and have it apply to pro- our project with one hundred and sixty-three spaces rather than two hundred. That's what we asked for.
Thank you.
If the commission is more comfortable, or staff would be more comfortable, we can come back with just a straight variance requirement and give our parking analysis, which staff can review, we can review, and, and, and not get involved with the, with a process variance versus what you would consider a straight variance as of, as of need.
So in my opinion, too early to tell what the feedback is of the board about, you know, which is the preferred path, but I think you've answered my question, which the legal notice that described what you intended to do tonight was not the traditional parking relief variance, but rather more of a process question.
Correct.
We would like to go to a def- another board, but depending on one's interpretation, we can't get there without you, the BZA. That's why we're here, to get, uh, onto the path, to get in front of another board.
And the difference, really, in that instance, is if we just go with a straight parking variance, you kind of take away the discretion of the P and Z to deny you for not having enough parking, because we would be technically be compliant, where if you make, if you get a, if you have, which we'll kind of call as a process variance, allowing us to apply, the P and Z has the discretion to say, "Well, we're not gonna, even though you're eligible for it, we're not gonna apply it." So, that's, that's the two differences. In any event, we need to go to another commission to review this approval, and then, and we're comfortable either way. I just thought this, the cleaner way to do was say, "Look, we only have one hundred and sixty-three spaces, we don't meet the ability to take advantage of this," versus saying, "Give me a variance of one hundred and sixty-three spaces." Okay, one hundred variance of whatever the number is.
I think I'm better now than I was before, understanding what you intended to do this evening, knowing that you may change paths, depending on what other feedback you receive. Going back to the, how much is required, are you acknowledging that Mr. Herbansky may have the right number in comparison to your charts, because...
As much as Mr. Herbansky just saw our, our, our plan, I just saw his comments, so I gotta, I gotta, I'll have to look through, I'll look through the regs.
And then, uh, so that's a question, just to get everyone on the same page. And then, uh, Mr. Galante apparently has a third number, as I was glancing at this. He's got a chart that talks about a required parking that's different than either you or Mr. Herbansky. So it'd be good to get him in the loop, you know?
Correct.
What's the number as a starting point, particularly if you end up taking a different path to say, "We just want relief from this board, from parking requirements." I, for one, would like to know how much relief.
Correct.
Quantify that, and not have three choices of an answer.
What we can do, if, request the continuance of this application, we can continue with staff, have everything so that it's one unified number, and maybe with some of the guidance from staff as to how they would like us to proceed, whether through process or just through a straight parking variance, uh, we can modify, either modify our application or give, res- resubmit our, and republish whatever we need to do. And we can do that rather quickly.
And to that end, perhaps that would give some lead time to Attorney Florick to confirm whether or not we can, if, even if we wanted to, grant you the relief you originally were seeking. Is that within our authority to do so?
Well, yeah, I mean, I'm pretty clear. I, I, Attorney Florick has his own opinion, I'm pretty clear on, I mean, it'd be like, you're not eligible for a condo development unless your property's five acres, and somebody comes to you and say, "I've only got four acres." And that's kind of what this is.
It'd be interesting, but it may not be possible to learn about, you know, why the number two hundred, was that an arbitrary number, or was there a thought given to it? That may be so old a requirement, no one may know the answer, but if we do have the additional time, and if that can be found, that would be useful for this member. I know I'm taking up a lot of time, can I throw a couple more at you, and then I'll yield to others?
You got me.
So I'm sorry, Mr. Galante's not here.
We are too.
There, it'd be good if he could come next time you were here. You described the distinction between the plans received tonight versus the ones that went out in the packet, where perhaps he was trying to be responsive to someone, I'm not sure whom, by segregating the spaces, whereas that means something to me as a planner. I can just imagine police or fire, people who like to circulate and have various options of getting from here to there, and they don't like dead ends, as best I know, and even for the sake of landscaping. So I'm wondering, uh...
Well, that'll all come under review in our neck. We have to have fire, as we go for a special permit, we would need fire in all the departments to review it for their comments.
Understood, but speaking for myself only, I hate to kick the can down after granting variances of run with the land with a crossing my fingers and hoping for the best that police and fire are okay with it. So Jay, I don't know, Mr. Herbansky, I don't know if this is overly burdensome to ask, but since we now have these plans, I would benefit if they could be transmitted for feedback received from police and fire before this board sees it again, so that we have some assurances that they're okay with the revised plans, because I don't think it's... some assurances that they're okay with the revised plans, because I don't think it serves you to go further down the path, find out, no, they're not, and then have to come back again with us, even if it's in administrative fashion, but just, I don't want to waste your time. And I wanted to start by saying, thank you for removing the number of variances sought for the signs. I should have started by thanking you for that, and I will yield to others.
Attorney Florick, would you like to...
I just wanted to note that I'll work with Jay and Attorney Rizzio on this before next month, if the board wants to continue it until next month.
Thank you. Any more questions from the board?
Do you think I may ask, Chairman, if, if we do continue, we just, we keep, keep the public hearing open so that we can have the give and take, and versus closing the hearing for submitting the plans? I know you don't want to hear from me again, but you have to tolerate me for a while.
Right, we'll make that decision when we have our administrative session. Is there anyone in attendance that want to speak in favor of this petition? Seeing none, is there anyone here that want to speak in opposition to this petition? Seeing none, do we have a motion to close this petition?
I make a motion to keep the item and continue it to the next meeting, and Mr. Hibanski, I don't know if you got my voicemail of yesterday, so I want to put it on the record. It would be beneficial to me to understand the prior approvals from the other boards, including this one, that run with the land, you know, the variances granted previously, getting copies of those resolutions, so we understand the context that preceded this request.
How far back, how far back would you like the approval? Just the most recent ones for this development?
Correct, yes.
And one thing I will add, I think, is this commission...
To continue, I'm just...
This was always going to be the phase...
To the microphone?
Yeah, and, and the, and the front piece was always going to be the last piece produced, and that was one, I think it was Commissioner DiSulio said, get that conference, get that conference center down and make this looking good before you come back and see us. And, so this, we will give copies of all the previous approvals that took us to this point.
I'm not sure everyone that's sitting here now was there then, so I think that would be useful.
Yes.
Thank you.
So, so a motion was made to keep this open till February 5th, our next meeting?
Yes.
Do we have a, Ms. Young makes a motion, do we have a second? Second by Mr. Hoydic, all in favor?
Aye.
Passed unanimously?
Thank you folks for your patience.
Thank you, Attorney Rizzio. With that, do we have a motion to close the public hearing? Oh, Mr. DiSulio?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Do we have a second? Second by Ms. Young, all in favor?
Aye.
Does, the motion is passed to close the public hearing, does anyone want to take a few minutes, a few-minute break, or do you want to go right into administrative session? Jay?
Good.
Good? Okay, with that, we'll start the administrative session. Is there a motion to take first petition off the table?
Motion to take 2381 Barnum Avenue off the table.
Thank you, do we have a second? Second by Mr. DiSulio, all in favor?
Aye.
Discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I was not here when this was heard last year, but I drove by the site, and I can, can tell you that I cannot find a better hardship in our regulations. There's no parking at all off-street, zero. There's a house of worship next door, part of it, I don't know if there's anything upstairs, and there's a little corner, 800 square feet. No matter what they do there, they will require, they will violate whatever parking regulations exist. So, based on its size, my opinion would be to lean to grant this waiver, but I want to hear from my other commissioners.
Ms. Young?
I thank Mr. DiSulio for sharing his observations, because I was not able to get to the site, so it's good to have that information. I wonder, Mr. DiSulio, if you, if you were inclined to make a motion to grant this, if you foresaw any conditions being attached to such an approval, such as confining the hours, as Ms. Streets asked, you know, seven to three, or limiting the number of employees to five, or suggesting, don't do like the laundromat, don't stick up a sign suggesting reserve parking when it's not yours to reserve, things of that nature.
Commissioner Young, I'm not actually inclined, based on looking at the site, it's, it's an old building, it's a corner entry, I can imagine people zipping in and out for a sandwich or a gyro, or whatever they happen to be serving up and be gone. I don't think any stipulations within a motion would be of value. So with that, I will make a motion to approve 2381 Barnum Avenue, Stratford, Connecticut, hardship being pre-existing building, predated zoning regulations.
So we'll go to a vote? I'm sorry, second by Mr. Hoydic?
I'll, I'll second Mr. DiSulio's motion as stated. Second.
Second, Ms. Young, how say you? Do you approve of this application?
Can I go last?
Absolutely. Ms. Streets?
Yes.
The chair votes no. Ms. Young?
I was expecting that.
I'll vote yes.
Passed unanimously, four to one. Congratulations.
Not unanimously, but four to one.
Well, I'm sorry, four to one.
Do we still get the vote, Mr. Chairman?
We made a motion second.
Right, right.
The record, I, I vote four in favor.
I also.
Sorry about that. Four to one. Do we have a motion to... Hold on.
I'll make a motion to take 314 Oak Bluff Avenue off the table.
Thank you, do we have a second? Second by Mr. Hoydic? All in favor? Discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve 314 Oak Bluff Avenue. Basically, as, as presented, the hardship that was stated and was confirmed by Jay in regards to a undersized lot, a 50-foot front constitute a good enough hardship to, to justify the addition to this, to this parcel? And that's my, my motion.
Ms. Streets, second, I'm Ms. Streets. All in favor of this petition? Ms. Young, how do you say?
I'm in favor, and just want to add, I'm grateful this applicant reached out to their neighboring property owners and shared with us their opinion, since they couldn't be here this evening, so I'm voting in favor.
Thank you, Ms. Streets?
Yes.
Mr. DiSulio?
Yes.
Mr. Hoydic?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, unanimously. Approve, congratulations. Is there a motion to take...
Motion to take 75 Solok Terrace, if I'm pronouncing that correct, off the table.
Second, second by Ms. Streets, all in favor? Any discussion?
I'll start.
I, oh, go ahead.
Please, go ahead.
I'm going to vote, I think that this application should be denied. I understand that the, the person, you know, might not have been here long, but I went by, I did a onsite review, it looks like a house. I'm worried about any owner afterwards getting this property and using that structure as a, any legal residence. I was thinking that maybe the applicant can find another way to use that space to have storage. That was my only concern, was the fact that it certainly, what the future would be with that residence. Ms. Young?
I share your concern, but I don't want to make the decision based upon the unknown of what might happen in the future. I was more persuaded to get to the same place that you were at by saying, they didn't demonstrate hardship, we don't know what relief we're actually being asked to grant, and therefore, I don't feel I can grant something, I don't know what I'm granting, without a hardship recognized under the current case law. So I would join you in not being in support of this application.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Ms. Streets?
I would agree with the previous comments, both, and I would just add that I, it's my opinion that there are so many other options that the applicant could have pursued before this, and I would encourage him to do that.
Thank you. Any other discussion? So the vote is to vote in opposition to deny this application. Ms. Young?
Is there actually a motion on the table?
Motion, yeah, um, no. I'm sorry.
I'll make a motion. Motion to deny failure to demonstrate hardship, other alternatives are available that don't necessitate a variance, and we don't know what relief we're actually seeking, since no scale plans were provided.
Do we have a second? Second by Mr. DiSulio, all in favor?
Aye.
So we'll take a roll call on this, to deny this application?
Aye, to deny.
Ms. Streets?
Aye, to deny.
Mr. DiSulio?
Aye.
To deny? Mr. Hoydic?
Yes, aye to deny.
And the chair votes aye to deny. Petition fails unanimously. Do we have a motion to close the public hearing? No, we got to go to administrative affairs? Is there a motion to approve the minutes from December 3rd?
I made a motion to approve the minutes of December 4th.
It was 4th?
It was the 4th.
I'm sorry.
Or maybe it was the 3rd or 4th.
Uh, it was the 4th. Yes, Mr. DiSulio made a motion to accept the minutes of December 4th. Do we have a second by Ms. Young, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Campsite review of 314 Oak Bluff?
So this was for the application that was just recently approved, per state statute, requires a, any project within the coastal boundary requires a review, subject to certain exemptions. Because this is within 100 feet of a coastal resource, even though it's a single-family dwelling and minor addition, it still requires a coastal site plan review. The subject lot resides in a, in an area defined as shorelands, which are upland areas at elevations in excess of 100, of the 100-year still water flood level, and located within the coastal boundary. On December 12th, the Office of Planning and Zoning received correspondence from DEEP's environmental analyst stating that they had no comments on the subject application, and the proposed project does not appear to pose any threats to Stratford's coastal resources.
Do we need a motion to approve under campsite? I'll make that motion.
We have a second? Second by Ms. Young, motion made by Mr. Hoydic. Are there any members' concerns or comments, or...
Are we all in favor?
Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Young?
You're asking if we're all in favor of Mr. Hoydic's motion?
Do we have a motion for approval of, what was that?
Are you asking us to all vote on the motion made by Mr. Hoydic to approve the campsite plan for 314?
Yes, yes, yes. Motion made by Ms. Young.
I am, taking a roll call.
Second? By Ms. Streets, all in favor?
Aye.
Any other items, or anybody else want anything to discuss?
I'd want to take a moment, if I might, to thank Mr. DiSulio for the year of service serving as our chair, I think allowing for a good transition for those times he couldn't be here when...
I turned my phone off, this is a new phone, and I don't want to turn it off, I was hoping it wasn't going to rent, turn it off.
I'm going to repeat that, because it's worthy of repeating. I want to thank Mr. DiSulio for his year of service acting as our chair, and giving opportunities for our current chair, when he was vice chair, to get his feet wet, allowing for the smooth transition, and I just hope the other boards follow the model that we set, where we all get along, and it's a wonderful, productive thing.
I'll second that, that's for sure. Thank you so much, Mr. DiSulio, and this definitely is one of my favorite boards to be on. You know, we're nonpartisan, we try to follow the letter of the law, and I learned so much from all of you.
I make a motion to adjourn the law of assessment.
Motion to adjourn, second by Ms. Young, thank you.
I am so sorry.
No, it's all right.
I was, I was sitting, thinking, God, please don't let this phone...
Well, it came at the end, so...
Yeah, because I tried to turn it off, and I didn't have to ask on how I turned it off, I don't know how.
I just have...